Counsel, please come to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Here.
Deanshaw.
Here.
Carlstone.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Lynn Burner Horst and for the.
All right, can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Vanster, DeYoung, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. I'd like to appoint Ann Frost to fill a vacancy on the Airport Committee. Ann is the Executive Director of Visit Pella or Pella CBB. Ann can provide perspective, community involvement, the tourism connection to the airport if approved. Ann's new six-year term will expire on January 1, 2029. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to reappoint Terry Voss to serve another term on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Terry has served on the commission since 2008, attending forty-nine of the sixty-three meetings during her term. If approved, Terry's new five-year term will expire on May 1, 2028. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Vanster, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to reappoint Mark Vananord to serve another term on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mark has served on the commission since 2022, attending seven of the nine meetings held during his term. If approved, Mark's new five-year term will expire on May 1, 2028. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Carlstone, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Carlstone.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to reappoint Vince Nosman to serve another term on the Board of Adjustments. Vince has served on the board since 2008, attending thirty-four of the thirty-nine meetings held during his term. If approved, Vince's new five-year term will expire on May 1, 2028. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Carlstone, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Motion passed. This time we have a time for public forum. Anyone wish to address counsel regarding any agenda items? Step forward to microphone, please state your name and address. Try to limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, now I'm in a public hearing regarding Budget Amendment Number One for fiscal year 2223 budget. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. For those in attendance and those walking in home on Pella Fiber, I'd like to direct your attention to the big board for a brief presentation on this item. As Mayor Ward stated tonight's public hearing as regards to Budget Amendment Number One for the current fiscal year, which ends on June 30th of this year, probably the key takeaway with this amendment is there will be no increases in property taxes or rates as a result of the amendment as well. Now, in explaining this amendment, overall, we have a drawdown in fund balance right around $2.8 million. And looking at it, it basically comprised of two categories. The first category that we have listed is timing differences. So this would be where a project has budgetary funds budgeted in one fiscal year, but the project is taking place in a different fiscal year. We had a drawdown in fund balance of $2.1 million for projects that were budgeted in other fiscal years other than fiscal year 23, which we are currently in the process with this amendment pertains to. The biggest items that we had with timing differences were the airport apron expansion. And counsel recalls, we actually received our federal funds for that project in fiscal year number 22. However, that project took place in the fall of last year. In addition, we completed the city's fiber optic system completion, which is right around $756,000 this year. And those funds were budgeted in the prior fiscal year as well. And as far as unbudgeted items that we had, the largest item that we had of this was just reconciling or placing in both the revenues and the expenditures, as well as the operating and capital expenditures of the Pella ambulance as well. So those are the two lion's shares are what comprises the amendments, Mr. Mayor. So with that, that completes the staff presentation. Before the county answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Mandys, we have any written comments?
No written comments.
Counsel, any comments or questions? Any comments from any member of the audience concerning this item? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Vanster, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 6583 entitled Resolution Amending Fiscal Year 2223 End of Budget by Adopting Budget Amendment Number One. Anything to add, Mike?
No, sir.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Hopkins, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 6584 entitled Resolution Amending the Volunteer Firefighter Compensation Plan. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Ward stated, what this resolution would do would amend the volunteer firefighter compensation plan. It is important to note, the biggest expenditure we have associated with our volunteer firefighters in which we propose this evening is an increase in the call-out pay paid from $15 up to $20 per incident. We do have additional detail on what comprises the additional compensation for the city's volunteer firefighters. Mandy, if you could please, let's go ahead. Now, it is important to note, in calendar year 2022, we paid a shy of $52,000 in compensation to our volunteer fire department. The cost of the proposed amendment or the increased compensation totals just over $9,200. The staff is recommending approval of these changes this evening. And it is important to note, if council were to approve this resolution, we would actually backdate it. So they've received the full compensation for calendar year 2023. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation this evening.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution Number 6585 entitled Resolution Approving Preliminary Plot for Pumpkin Patch Farm Subdivision. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Ward stated, what this resolution would do is approve of a preliminary plot for a proposed subdivision that's located along 210th Avenue and Highway 163. And this is just west of the Pella corporate limits. It is important to note that the property that we are talking about this evening is a 366 acre site that is currently zone A1 to ag. And then we do have the highlight of the current property and twenty parcels that comprises part of property rate listed on the board as well. Now, before we go on, it is important to note that this subdivision is being proposed for ag transfer for ag purposes. And what's actually being done is a consolidation of the existing parcels from twenty to three. So we're almost going in reverse when you think about the subdivision ordinance. Now, under our subdivision guidelines, this does qualify for an ag exemption, but the property owner has chosen to go ahead with the subdivision process because for title purposes, they believe it would be cleaner to go through the whole subdivision since they're consolidating the number of parcels on this item. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And what we have up here is the preliminary plot for the subdivision. And as you can see, we are consolidating twenty parcels down to three parcels now in reviewing this item. Once again, it is important to note that the Planning and Zoning Commission did review this preliminary plot after a thorough meeting and did unanimously approve the plot. So with that, Mr. Mayor, before the county answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Hopkins.
Support.
Vanster, any discussion?
I just wondered, what does an urban reserve stand for as one of the categories that future identifies?
Yeah, the future use land map, that was a category that designated an area to be identified for future urban development. That is what the urban reserve, the category of the future use land map.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor of the motion for approval, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution Number 6586 entitled Resolution Approving a Second Amendment to the Agreement with Cal Services Inc. Doing Businesses Midwest Sanitation. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a brief presentation on this item. It is important to note that the City Council did discuss this item during policy and planning on May 2nd. Now, as far as the amendment we are considering this evening is a one-year extension of the current contract of Midwest Sanitation. That is our solid waste provider, our provider of the solid waste service for the city of Pella. Now, it is important to note, this would be the second amendment or second contract extension. If council were to approve this resolution, if the resolution were to be approved, we have a one-year extension out until July 31st of 2024. Associated with the resolution of the amendment this evening is a 4.8% price increase, which bounced to just shy of $25,000 for the city of Pella. And it is very important to note, in looking at this from the staff's perspective, we believe that we will be able to pull rates for one year on the matter with it. So please keep that in mind with the one-year extension that we are not proposing any rate changes associated with that. If we were to do it multiple years, it's very likely that there would be a rate increase associated with it as well. So finally, Mr. Mayor, the council is well aware, we didn't spend a lot of time talking about this on May 2nd. And I know this is a very brief presentation, but we don't have to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 6587 entitled Resolution Amending the Resolution Adopted May 12, 2020, authorizing issuance of communications utility revenue capital loan notes Series 2020A and authorizing execution and delivery of a replacement note. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Ward stated, what we have is a resolution that's for two notes that were associated with the construction of Pella Fiber. It is important to note that in both cases, these notes were issued in 2020. Now, under both these notes, the key item that's being amended in both notes is the same for Pella Fiber. What we're simply doing is extending the draw period for Pella Fiber from May 15th of this year to January 31st, 2024. All of the terms associated with the notes would remain the same. The reason this amendment is necessary is council is aware, we're in the process of constructing a joint transport line within the annual municipal utilities. That line is expected to be completed later this fall. We are currently using these notes to finance our share of the transport line. So that is the reason for the extension. So finally, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to also mention that the amendments were prepared by the city's legal council and have been reviewed by our financial advisor, which is Mr. Michael Maloney of DA Davidson, excuse me. And staff is recommending approval of the resolutions this evening.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Obstain conflict of interest.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Does the motion pass, then?
It does, and that is due to a conflict of interest, but it doesn't go against, it doesn't go against.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 6588 entitled Resolution Amending the Resolution Adopted May 12, 2020, authorizing the issuance of communication utility revenue capital loan notes Series 2020G and authorizing execution and delivery of a replacement note. Nothing to add, I'm sure.
Your preference, Mayor.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Hopkins, Carlstone, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Obstain conflict of interest.
Motion passed. Abstract Bill Number 2127, can I get a motion for approval?
Would you approve an issue warrants?
Support.
DeYoung, Hopkins, any questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Deanshaw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business you'd like to address us with this evening?
Well, last time I had council meeting, you said everybody have a good tulip time as we left, and I think that happened.
I think it was pretty good, yes.
Thanks to all the city staff that stepped up and worked so hard to do their part.
For a lot of people in town. Anything else? Okay, any member of the public have any other business you'd like to address counsel with this evening? If so, please step forward to microphone, state your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
I'll try. Anne Summitt, 1435 Hazel Street. I just have some questions about Timmerview now that everything's gone. There is no longer a house, there's no longer a beautiful oak barn that was home to many critters and birds, owl swallows and turkey vultures, which are now relocating everywhere around town. And they even took out over 150-year-old oak trees. I just need to know, was an environmental study done on this prior to this being done?
I, do you know? Answer that?
That would be a private development issue on that, so.
I think we need an answer because those oak trees are absolutely gorgeous. I think they could have been incorporated in. When this subdivision started, we were told, all of us who lived on the end of Hazel Street, that we would be kept informed. However, the clearing of all of this area was never brought to our attention. We have absolutely heard nothing. The following questions I think need to be answered. Is this now an urban renewal area?
Yes, I believe the council has approved an urban renewal plan for the area.
When did that happen?
We did, yeah, we can hit them in those days free. I don't happen to have that with me, right? But we did approve the urban renewal plan for the development.
Okay, has ATI or the city of Pella granted a TIF for this development?
Excuse me?
A TIF, has it been identified for this development? A TIF, the tax increment financing?
As far as the economic development incentives, council has approved it, built a degree.
So how much is it for and for how long?
That I'd have to get for you too, those.
I'd like that information too. It's my understanding, and I'm not an expert on this by any means, that a TIF basically pays for infrastructure. Is that true?
That was the intent for housing. That's what is secured under Iowa law for housing. That's what it can be used for, it's a public.
So does this include storm sewers and the extension Hazel Street?
That is the intention.
So has any other money, other than the TIF money, been promised or granted to ATI?
All the cities' incentives are geared towards the dedication, construction of the public infrastructure, ultimately dedication back to the city of Pella. So there hasn't been any other funds affiliated with it.
I just feel like we haven't been real transparent with all of this down in our area. In the past, other developments such as Fountain Hills, Parkview, the Oakwood Cemetery area, Eastside and many others were mostly paid for by the developer. These were people, local people, who valued the city of Pella. And I find it a little unsettling that ATI and outside of Pella developer is getting all of these little perks. I think we as citizens of Pella need to know how many TIFs we have in this community right now, how much they're for and how long they're going, how far are we into them, how much longer. We were told that ATI would be a good neighbor to us. When those trucks carried load after load after load of stuff to the landfill, they were loaded down and they had a hard time getting up that hill to the south. But boy, when they came back empty, they flew. And they need to be aware, we have children, multiple children living on this street. We have elderly people too. We don't have sidewalks. So please just kind of reinforce, we need safety on this. So just something to think about. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we will move into our policy and planning session to review and discuss stormwater retention.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to direct the council's attention to the big board for a discussion on stormwater issues in Pella. And as council is aware, this was requested, I believe, by Dr. Carlstone and council member Lynn Burner Horst, as well as far as the stormwater issues in review. And what we just wanted to do before discussing the stormwater issues, just so everyone's aware of what the current regulations are currently in cities. Regulations regarding secondary storm sewers and detention have been in place since roughly 2007. Now, as we discussed the developments this evening, we do have an example of one residential development as well as one potential commercial project for stormwater improvements in our community. It's very important to note that prior to 2007, developments may have had less stringent stormwater requirements. However, equally important to note, when you talk about older developments, they were likely legal at the time they were approved as far as meeting stormwater requirements. So please keep in mind that stormwater, the regulation of stormwater, the requirements for stormwaters have changed over time as well. Now, as we're here to talk about this evening is a key policy issue for the city council. Anytime you talk about updating the infrastructure to meet current standards, it can present both logistical challenges as well as financial challenges. And as a result, it's always important, and I believe anyway, to address these items in a comprehensive manner rather than on a project-by-project basis as well. So please keep that in mind. Tonight's discussion is likely a policy issue for the city council. So let's go ahead, please. Mandy? Okay, now, as far as the stormwater issues and what concerns the city typically receives over, in regards to these areas, as over time, as the city has developed, in particular, when we look back at older neighborhoods in there where they may be whacking modern storm sewer infrastructure, their ability to handle large rain events is limited on this. And so often it leads to stream flooding or water, excessive water on city streets as well as basement backups as well. Now, it is important to note that previously, the city council had looked at this issue and there was an evaluation that was done in the 1970s. And at the time, it was felt in the report, and I believe it was felt or believed that over 60% of the homes in our community had some sort of, some type of illegal connection to the sanitary sewer. So the key takeaway is, is with stormwater, illegal connections going to the sanitary sewer, when you have heavy rainfall events, that often surcharges the public sewers on that as well. Those were the key culprits for basement backups as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, before we get into explaining this diagram, I would be remiss if I did not state, oftentimes, anytime you talk about stormwater issues and a plan of action with stormwater issues, quite often it deals with limiting and inflow infiltration. I'm going to turn this map or this diagram over to our Public Works Director, Danny Byer, to explain I and I, likely causes of I and I in the system. So Danny, if you could take, please walk council through this diagram.
Yeah, I apologize, this map's a little cluttered. It shows every possible, we might say, illegal hook up to the sanitary sewer. The green pipe up there is the sanitary leaving the house. Of course, all your interim plumbing, including floor drains. Beyond that, footing drains are going to be hooked with a sump pump. You know, and anything else, you can see there, we've found yard drains over the years hooked up, downspouts. Downspouts are pretty easy to find with a smoke chest in the entire city. You'll actually blow smoke right out the gutters, the ruffled tides on fire. Those are pretty easy to catch. They did a lot of that in the 70s and 80s. These are Kim was heavy into that for us. But then, as Mike's mentioned, then lacking, there's several areas that almost have zero if any storm sewer, so they weren't provided a place to put that, that storm water. You know, there's yard green tiles, there's footing tiles, and all those, when they go to that sanitary sewer, essentially when we have two, three-inch rain, by the time that second inch starts, you know, by now, it's gone along the foundation, because a lot of foundations, we all tried to keep resloping them and getting it away. But it gets down to those footing drains instantly. Sump pumps start kicking on, it goes in the green pipe, our manholes build up. And if you're the weak link of three or four houses, they get, you know, a lot of basement flooding. And unfortunately, when one guy fixes his and makes it better, then sometimes it'll actually raise it an inch or two. Nobody can prove it, but it can raise it an inch or two in one of the neighbors. It's just a fact of life when everybody's hooked like that. And there's a lot of areas still where the footing drains are illegal, sump pumps are going into the sanitary. And there's areas where people have just learned to live with it. So the phone doesn't always ring. We had a near miss, was it Saturday, Saturday, big downpour. You know, only had five inches just south there, they kind of seven, seven and a half inches in an area. If that hit Pella, we'd probably fill the room for this discussion tonight. But Pella, I probably have an inch and a half to maybe a little more, somebody, some of the north side might owe more. So we haven't seen that kind of rain that causes these problems now for, I think we're going on four years. We haven't had this type because when we rebuilt West Third, we haven't really tested that for the reasons we redid that and made it bigger. So I know we haven't had it for at least four years, I believe. So sooner or later, we're going to get a four or five-inch rain. Unfortunately, you know, the national average too is, a lot of people move every five years. You know, whether, you know, in today's real estate market, you're just close that, pass it on. You've had this problem, hey, you got to do this, and that doesn't always get passed on. So when this much time has gone by, you have new owners, haven't seen this particular issue or it's worse than they expected and that type of thing. So it's a real issue, and I get it. And you know, a lot of times, it's a lot of clear water flooding on top of themselves. But if it's something, if it's a sanitary backing up, it does have sewage in it and it will have TP and other things in. So it's a real unfortunate situation. When we got an area without any storm sewer, and as Mike's mentioned, in the new subdivision, for instance, just roughly a design, and we're going to talk about an area specifically, but you typically have 15, 18-inch storms who are going up each block. About a little over halfway, there might have been a set intakes at that intersection at the bottom of the hill, and another set, a little over halfway up, maybe three, 350 feet. And if that catches enough of the rest of the street, then we'll go on up with an eight-inch. And then on that eight-inch and that 15 or 18-inch, we'll run a sump pump drain line service to every house now. And that was new when the city adopted SUDAS in 2002. And some of the records are a little unclear. I believe the last two or three phases of Fountain Hills is when that was implemented, which was possibly shortly after 2002. But I know what happened in 2007, I believe, when phase three and four went in. So we started putting sump pump drain lines. And in my time here, our street crew, they loved the lay pipe too, just like distribution crew. We've done a lot of in-house, three, 400-foot stretches, picked up nuisance tile. Because of course, in the winter, those are the areas, the water's running out on the street even when it's 10 degrees out, and the ice just keeps building up. So we've done a lot of retrofit in-house and picked up some problems. But of course, we could, you know, probably spend a hundred thousand doing that every summer. We rent the mini, that's great work for a mini back though, because it's only three, four, five feet deep. And, but we just don't have the time and the money to get to every house in town to provide them that. Especially when you have entire neighborhoods that have almost zero, as you're going to see here in many storms, or from blocks, blocks on top of blocks. Do you guys have any questions so far on any of that?
When the testing was done in the seventies, was mitigation done then on the ones you saw the smoke coming out of the roof?
A lot of elimination was attempted at that time. And the experts, I don't want to put words in anybody's specific's mouth, but some of the experts, you can go to seminars on this and hear DNR and then talk about it, where it's the right thing to do to get the IONI out. All the direct connections, get it out, but you can work at it for years, you know, and make a small dent for the money you have to invest into it. You know, even in a new subdivision where the water table's high. Another improvement we've made now is every manhole where the mainline pipes go in, what's called an A-lock. Down to that pipe shoved in, it's a hard rubber gasket. So, we're forcing that in there. But if the water table's six, eight, ten feet above it during wet years, there's so much head pressure on that A-lock as it ages for the next ten. We like to think they're good for fifty years, but they're not. And it'll start leaking past that. And the higher that head pressure gets in a wet year, the more will bleed into that. And it can happen in a brand-new manhole. We've been fighting on the punch list on the brand-new Prairie Ridge trunk sewer out west, where we hooked in and put a new A-lock out, the head pressure immediately was overwhelming that A-lock. We've got it down to a trickle now. But in five years' time, we need to revisit that A-lock problem. So, it's kind of still a weak piece in the design. But with plastic pipes, now we're either glued or we're compressed. And we hope plastic pipe doesn't crack like the clay does. You know, without ultraviolet damage, it, you know, hopefully, we get a hundred years out of plastic pipe we put in the ground today. But a lot of old Pella too, that's another piece of this. It's old clay, you know, the old VCP acronym. And there's cracks in it, even when some of it's nice and round yet. And as we do our cleaning and televising, and you know, run a camera down every ten years, every sewer we clean and televise, and there's some known areas we do it more often. But once that pipe starts opening, too bad, then it's time to hurry up and line it, and or total replacement, because we're going to have a collapse and, you know, have something worse, like ten houses backed up. And it takes us two days to get down to get it replaced, so.
When we line it, what does that do to these illegal?
And when we're lining it, we're lining that green with the bottom, the public sanitary sewer. The weak piece of lining, and they now have a new product out, will actually seal where that Y comes in, where that green is dumping in the top. It actually dumps in where the side or a forty-five, not in the top. That's a mistake. There was none for years in the old days too. They'd come to the top and it would punch down. But as we line that, they robotically then will go back in, they know where that was at, and they robotically with the camera running, they'll cut that hole back out, and here it comes. But the issue is, a lot of failures, and of course, in Pella since the guys of the thirties. The homeowner's responsible for that Y, clear out, and a lot of times, under the center of the street. So, when that fails, that's theirs to replace. And when they need to go to the top of the pipe, sometimes they grill car pipe too. But the weakness in lining is, there's a process that can fix that first couple of feet, but the rest of that's a hundred-year-old service. So, in reconstruction, when we reconstruct a street and a sewer, we take new service to the right away. We get it out from under the paving. There's no reason to put, you know, a quarter million dollar block paving back on top of hundred-year-old services. So, that's a windfall when we rebuild the street. Everybody gets a new curb stop out to the right away and a new sanitary sewer.
So, that's what happened like on West Third, when we redid that?
Correct. And, you know, Washington, Hayes, University, everywhere we've been in the last fifteen years, where we've built new sanitary sewers, there are new services. So, where we should be done there, we'd like to say, we hope for a hundred years, but none of us will be around to find that out either. We do our best for now.
Is there a solution for homeowners to fix their illegal infiltration besides the, and they do a liner, reedoscopic?
They can. And to finish back on that lining, there's something new in the last couple of years. I think you even mentioned one, you'd seen it advertised, Mark, one time. We've had a couple of guys go to these. They can line the services too. It's a whole nother system, because of course, now you've got that service tied in out in the middle of the block. So, you don't have that access, you know, one hundred fifty foot each, right? So, you've got to get in there somewhere. So, it's still quite expensive. But back to your retrofit, you know, with, a lot of people went in, and that's why I brought these as show and tell. These are backflow preventers. And this is what everybody calls the automatic. And if a lot of people down have them, it's got a valve. So, your sewer's running this way, it's kicking that valve open. But the problem with this, and if you don't keep it on and clean it out, TP can get in there and it'll hold a crack open, and the sewer's coming back, it'll hold it up and still flood you out. So, my preference is, you put a valve in. This one, they refer to it as a guillotine valve. And if you're on vacation, though, you might have problems, you just shut it when you leave home. And then, you know, as long as your kids don't come home and take six showers, wash a lot of clothes without opening the valve, good. I have recommended to plumbers and building inspectors for years, that's a hundred and thirty dollars, or it was about five years ago. Put it in every new house, because it's easy then. And later, when you're digging down outside the foundation or tearing out the basement floor to get these in, you know, it's five, ten, fifteen thousand. The price is, underground work anymore is getting ridiculous. So, I advertise these everywhere.
Is that kind of solution something we can tie to change of ownership, or new bills in the code, or?
It's tough, because you're already talking that thousand-dollar retrofit. You know, like I said, backing up to real estate law, the real estate disclosure notice is supposed to say, hey, you've had trouble. You've got a known issue. You've had a flooded basement. And/or here's what we've done to correct it, don't know if it fixed it. But that getting passed on is a hundred percent, just put it out.
Do you know if there's other communities that require that in new builds?
I haven't found that yet. Everybody so far is thinking I'm crazy. But as many basements as I've been in in forty years, that is cheap. And you do it with glue. It's like, you know, anybody can, any homeowner can install it, if you do it at the right time. You have the basement door hanging. Because usually, your cleanout's right by the wall, you know, and then it heads over here somewhere, your main line coming down from the toilets and all. So, when you bust up the floor for these, sometimes it's an easy fix. But then, your problem is, if the footing drains are coming into your sanitary, they may have done that at different locations. It's not all happening conveniently just outside the wall, where the service heads in the street. That's the problem. Because legally, they should have put in a sump pump. All the footing drains go to the sump pump. It goes out, up, and over into the blue pipe, the storm sewer. And that's where, if we don't have that, so many neighborhoods are just pumping it from your backyard. And we're, we've gotten better about it, because Doug and I keep an eye out for it. We used to have a lot of people run a pipe over the curb. And they'll run, some houses will run twenty-four, seven, a whole year. And we've tried to identify those, because they were also making ice dams in the winter. So, we've tried to attack some of those areas to get those off the curb line. And we don't approve of that. By code, it says you're to, not to dump any of that closer than five feet to any property line. So, we referee that between property owners. It's like, hey, my neighbor's got his sump pump pumping on the property line, headed at my basement windows. That's a common call in public works. And we try to pass it on to Jerry Byers. But we didn't. It's a tough situation, because there are just so many of them. And then, you know, guys, then if you find downspouts, you know, or yard drains, or the old cellars in some of the old houses, those are major feeds. They allow, it's not just the water in that doorway. Sometimes they're so low, a lot of water. Last time we smoked test in the northeast corner, for instance, one of them, we found, there was an old house behind Westin Auto. They had a tucked-under garage. And they tore that house down, the basement was still there. Took you a pretty big area. And all those floor drains, for years, have been taking water out of that parking lot. So, we did take some water off that West Third. You know, that was one that we caught by smoke testing here five years ago. And there's a lot of those tucked-under garages in town, and they've got to go somewhere. So, you know they're going in the sanitary. They have no other place, unless they got to walk out on Steve Hill.
Okay, then proceed. All right, let's go ahead. As Danny stated, infiltration and flow, and what the city has done over the years, is we've actually built more capacity into our sanitary sewer. For those of you, this is about ten years ago, Danny. Those are in relation to a DNR mandate at the time. But we made investments totaling over, at that time, over four million dollars into our sanitary sewer system. We added more pumping stations, forced mains, and we actually added large detention areas. That's been done over the years. Now, what this has allowed the city to do is increase the amount of stormwater that's been transported to the wastewater treatment plant. As Danny has stated, both in the solution, the solution in the eyes of the DNR, as well as the EPA is a preferred solution. But what those entities traditionally have recommended is to remove the IONI entirely from your system and do not treat it at your wastewater treatment plant. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as examples that we have tonight, we picked out, we tried to have one residential project, as well as one, what we would call a commercial project. And these are just for discussion purposes. And before starting the discussion on these areas, please keep in mind, stormwater regulations have changed over the years when developments have been originally constructed. It's likely that both of these items would have been legal at the time when they were installed in the city of Pella. It met code with it as well. But first, the area that we have to lead off with a residential project, I'll let Danny explain this area. But this area is just south of Pella High School that we have. It is on between University and East Oskaloosa, from East Eight, East Fifteenth Street. Now, as far as the storm sewer system in there, there's very little storm sewer in this area. This right highlighted area that we have listed up on the board. And in addition, what compounds the matter in this area is the water table is fairly high in this area as well. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the solution, I'll let Danny talk about the solution. The Public Works is estimating the cost to install the secondary storm sewer in there. As far as the public infrastructure, right about three million dollars on this as well. And Danny, for this right highlighted area, as far as the solution, or what your staff believes, the solution, one potential solution to reducing IONI in this area would be, could you explain that to council, please?
Yeah, I apologize. I wish I could cut the other map to print. The red line at the top, which is north of the school, is where all of our storm sewers located this entire neighborhood. Everything else in the red, there's no storm sewer. There's no green pipes that turn on on mapping. It's all along University, believed to be put in then. There's a couple of areas off by Fifteenth, stubbed partway into a couple of backyards. That's it. Nothing else. For the most part, Oskaloosa Street is almost on the ridge. There's a little bit of water that actually comes this way from the south, South Oskaloosa. But then, it all eventually ends up in a low point, goes across the school parking lot, and ends up where we've labeled potential detention areas. And then, to the west, or excuse me, to the east, to the right, there's actually a large pipe on the north side of that parking lot that goes east, and under the football field, around the forty, fifty-yard line, I believe, I think it's sixty-inch pipe. And it hasn't been large for a while.
Sixty?
I believe it's sixty. Sixty or maybe a little larger. And it's always a concern, man, it will have sinkhole on the fifty-yard line on Thursday night. It's going to happen. And so, it needs walked every once in a while. That's not been walked for a while. Anyway, how that happened years ago, I can't explain it. But that was a low point. That was a ditch. So, that's where you put the bigger storm sewer. So, we think to fix under normal today's design, even back then, there should have been some storm sewer up these streets. But today, let's start at University. Each one of those streets probably should, by today's design standards, have a storm sewer about five, six hundred feet, and set intakes probably every three to three hundred feet. And from the six hundred clear to Oskoosa, from that on up, then an eight-inch, where we just add sump pump drain line services. And wherever that concrete pipe was, in the fifteen, eighteen, we will also put services into that. And then, you'd have intakes picking up that water getting in pipe. The problem with that is, the pipe that was put in University is only large enough, pretty much, to handle that flow. So, we'd have to go north, get across the school parking lot, into that major ditch, which long before I started here, has been identified as a potential regional detention pond area. And as we talked about, the rules not in place back then, a lot of the school parking lots, buildings, were all built before detention was required. So, that street crossing at Eighth is already actually acting as a major detention area for us. It probably just needs, unfortunately, the trees got to come out, we core out, and make it bigger. And schools have been put on, so that any additional additions and add-ons by them in this drainage basin, they're going to have to help us, we're going to have to make that detention larger, even just for their future improvements. So, I know they'll work with us on that. But that's it in a nutshell. And then, as we've said at the bottom, unfortunately, once we run the big pipe, make the detention area, run the big pipe up, run a twenty-four-inch, let's say, up University always, to stub up each street with a fifteen or eighteen, on up with the eight-inch and all the services, nobody privately is hooked on yet. And that's what the bottom bullet's about. So, now, they got to chase it back, you know, if their services blow the basement floor, like a lot of them are. There are a few in that neighborhood that are halfway up the wall, which is kind of a, and then the basement floor drains are on grinded pumps to get it up that high. There's some of that too. And that's due to some of the sewer out in the street is shallow. But anyway, with all that said, it's still going to be extremely expensive on the private side. You know, there are communities that, when they get mandates from the DNR, they do subsidize that side. But yeah, it's, none of us cheap. That's it in a nutshell, what happens in a neighborhood when it has zero storm sewer. There's just, we don't have an answer for anybody's. A lot of those backyards fall back, and if you go through there, I'm sure now, you put the inch and a half rain, you might squish, squish, squish.
How old is this name right now?
I believe it started in the late fifties, into the sixties, into the seventies, over time. Because, yeah, I can remember as a kid, that eleven, eleven, twelve on, weren't there. Yeah, I'm going to age myself. In the mid-seventies, some of those streets were not there yet.
Is there a rule of thumb for usual percent of citizens that adopt into something like this? You talking fifteen percent are voluntary to it?
No, sixty percent. Not really. My understanding, there's a little bit of this. I won't have a call, but I'm not sure who headed that up for them. They had a mandate a few years ago. I know they subsidized some, but I'm pretty sure everybody comes screaming on other than the third or fourth house that really takes the blood. Those people are always thankful. I've made a lot of new friends over fifteen years, when we did find solutions. People that, my first couple of years here, they just call me names and scream at me for five minutes, or we carry on the conversation, and they've appreciated city projects. Or just figuring out solutions for individual houses too. And that's been done by many people over the years. That's why some people just learn to deal with it, or learn how to handle it, and or fix theirs, and now it's made the neighbors deeper, but nobody can prove that. But there's houses in that area that used to, and I'm assuming still will, hit three feet, not three inches. They don't just get wet. They get a lot of it. And during those three or four-inch drains, like I talked about, our sanitary sewer on there, it surcharges, you know, pretty quickly, within an hour or so. You know, and another rule of thumb I always use to put it in reality, our wastewater plant averages one, one point three million to one point five on a given day, treated to treat water, water coming out of us. And if we have three-inch rain in town, three-inch or above, we will bump up to seven to eight million gallon a day in the first twenty-four hours that rainfall occurs. And that's why we built the seven million gallon detention pond just upstream of the plant. You know, we have the seven million gallon north of the plant, but the pump stations all pick up, and then they pump it back. Northeast Florida that way. So, that keeps it off our backs, so we have time to treat it. Because we prefer to not treat it past about two and a half million. Otherwise, it overloads the plant. We don't mean, you know, that we'd be in violation of F rules. But yeah, as far as the percentage, how many participate, that's, every neighbor's going to be different. But I know you're not going to get a hundred percent with that. And it hurts. I mean, that's a lot of money for something that, you know, maybe only happens every three years.
Have you heard of anybody grading public assistance based on some sort of task or severity of backflow? So, the ones that are more prone to be penalized, if neighbors all opt in, or some sort of?
Not really. But DNR does judge, and I forget the numbers, Mike, and I won't quote any numbers tonight, because I'd be wrong. They, when they mandate stuff on top of us, to make us do stuff, the EPA, we're DNR, and then always flows back through DNR, there's a percentage of our monthly sewage bill to any, like average house in Pella, they look at that percentage to our gross income in Marion County. And unfortunately, we're nowhere near bumping up to that. So, in the federal formula, and the state views to DNR, we're nowhere close to hardship. That's why I'm saying with that. We can charge twice what we are now, and we're not to the hardship yet. Last, the formula was figured for us. So, unfortunately, that's not what people want to hear. And sometimes, to apply for other additional federal funding, you'll have to already be spending that or charging that level. And then, they'll start helping you out. But if you're not doing that yet, oh, just raise rates. I just love to like just raise rates. Well, that's, yeah, easy for somebody that's not setting their seat to do.
Time to move on to the commercial project, Mayor? All right, thank you. Okay, before we turn it over to Danny, what this project involves is just south of the downtown. And it's actually enlarging the storm sewer pipe that comes from the downtown. We'd actually establish a new detention basin that would be on the old Junior High Field on this as well. Through the years, the city council has talked about this project, and it's always been associated with downtown or the redo of the streets, or the renovation of the streets in the city's downtown. But ultimately, it's a judgment call of the city when this project takes place. And Danny, if you want to explain it, what this project would involve, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, easiest way to start, with that red line is, there's a lot of storm sewers there today. It's been analyzed over the years. It's known it's gotten fuller and fuller, let's say, or exceeded at the capacity way more than it ever was meant to carry. And, you know, you go back to the thirties, when that, they started developing that, some of that pavement that's there today, the middle section anyway, was paved in the thirties, is my understanding, you know. Not long before that, some of that was mud. But like there, well, where the libraries at today, they tell me, and you can kind of tell by the contours, that was an old ditch ravine that went from there to the southeast. So, while that area was developed, you might say, on an old creek channel to start with. So while that area was developed, you might say, on an old creek channel, to start with. So you had a lot of water, a lot of water funnels down to this area. But over time, and I'll, I'll write ourselves out, you know, like the library was built way before the time of any stormwater detention, you know, all your larger pieces, even the woolly rod, the, what used to be the grocery store, now the restaurants, any of that, second reform, none, none of that has stormwater detention. And, and therefore, it's all pretty much impervious surface, you know, nothing soaks up, it just all runs off from heavy rain. So what does that do for us today? Well, at the intersection of Independence, when we hit anything, you know, it depends how fast it comes. Sometimes an inch and half rain comes real fast, and it may have flooded, I didn't get here in time Saturday night, or Saturday afternoon. It may have then, but usually it's a two inch plus rain. It will get to almost two feet deep at Independence and Main Street there, and then it runs east, down to Independence. It scares a lot of people, doesn't do a lot of property damage, but of course, it's, it's kinda scary to see, and we always advise people, turn around, don't drown, and when it's two feet deep, you can stall out a lot of small cars, and it usually happens. So anyway, to fix that, the red line's just representing, and other studies have shown this, that have been done, and Kirk and Michael did the last one, oh guys, twenty years, twenty seven years ago, but somehow to put in a larger pipe down through that corridor, and if you picture that, now that corridor is easy, it's all pavement or under driveways, and you know, front of P D, by the fire station, all that would have to be dug up. And so there's a lot of inconvenience there, but, you know, let's say it starts with a new twenty-four inch up there at Franklin, and we have other issues, we'd like to solve that intersection, that would give us a place to put it, including the Marion County bank, and that's back in there, some of that really needs to come southwest. Anyway, and then larger pipe, but by the time you get to Independence, you know, some of the numbers in the past, they were at least a forty-eight inch pipe. Maybe the oval pipe where it's squished, it's a little wider than, less tall, just to get, get cover on. But I really, it's probably more like a sixty inch pipe, it's, it's gonna take something big, um, to drain that, to keep that intersection from flooding. And then what do you do with all that water? Well, right now, it gets down to the Independence area, it flows overland, and just off the map, right there where it says pond area, right off the side of that, there's a ditch that starts. And then by the time you get to East Third, there's actually a seventy-two inch pipe. And if you follow that, when we rebuilt that a couple of years ago, that pipe was actually underneath the house at the next corner. And then some of that storm from there on is a double barrel, but then it's back, I think when it outlets down, uh, across from the swimming pool, we get back to that ditch right across from the pond we were just talking about, is where they come back together. And then it drains north, all under Vermeer Road. So if you picture all that, we can't just add that wall that much, we can't add a sixty inch running full to that system. So that's, that's where we, for years, like I say, before my time, they talked about making that a regional detention pond there. Cause if you started retrofitting uptown, anytime you wanna redevelop, you go into, it's nearly impossible to do a little corner here and there, and it's, you know, the addition of all that's just, it's not gonna add up too much. So regional's really the way to handle a big pipe. And clearwater, DNR, you know, they're okay with that, it's, you're not treating it. The unfortunate thing with the old junior high fields is the, the history and the rumors of what might be buried there, cause it was a dump site, I think a lot of it was brick, a lot of it was glass, there's even rumors it's an early nineteen hundred steam engine. And I've heard that that's absolutely factual, somewhere towards the east side of that, tipped off of the ditch and buried. So it'd be kinda interesting to take that part of it up. I'm not sure there's any, I won't point, I'm not sure anybody here's old enough to remember that. Right, Mark?
Not that one, I remember the one behind the old swimming pool.
Yeah.
We'd go play in the dump after our showings and lessons.
Yeah. My dad did too. So anyway, that could be a potential.
How'd the steam engine get that?
It was just a dump, we had many of them in Pella, all of a sudden, here was a ravine, a deep ditch, hey, let's...
Throw a train in there.
We got this done. Track the steam engine, I'm sorry, not train, yeah, train.
That sounds like a lot of work.
Yeah, track the steam engines, yeah. But you know, and that, that could drive this price up, but if we knew that was just dirt, I wouldn't have given you that price, but it scares me there. You know, it's just brick and glass, that's one thing.
Would that eventually, or potentially preclude that area from the ECU standpoint? If there's buried...
Not necessarily, unless there was contamination, you know, there's always a little bit with stuff like that, but, no, I don't think it'd be brownfield by any means. But, you know, we just don't know what was in some of these, I don't know, if you watched the tennis courts being built, and that pond being done, there was a lot of interesting stuff coming out of there. For a while, there was some old toilets laying up on the hillside, there were nineteen forty inch, ten inch toilets. And then there's some tree trunks there that must have been ceded, cause they were well preserved.
That whole area was dumped.
Yeah, cause that, that was huge.
I know someone put a fence on P Street there, when they dug the post hole, they get some interesting things.
Yeah. That's a good piece not done. That's kind of in a nutshell, I, and like I say, I'm not the first to come up with this plan, this wasn't original, but we need a bigger pipe and probably a detention pond, cause you're not gonna build much any bigger than seventy-two inch from East Thirdies, and you're just not gonna do that. That's, you start getting into box culverts that are, you know, quarter million dollars per hundred foot.
So I think you said the discussion about this was, if you replace the streets to do it then?
Well, ideally...
Does it go in the middle of the street?
Uh, that's a good question, because as you know, that right way is full. Um, I, I do know this same stretch, there's a good share of that's gonna need a new eight inch water main or ten inch at some point, on the east side. And all of that stuff, it's, it's full today. And so we gotta be careful, what else we allow in it, cause if, yeah, if I'm saying at least when you start heading north, you need a thirty-six to forty-two inch pipe, that's still, it takes up a lot of space. So there may be some thought, you know, sanitary sewer through parts of that is under the center of the street, so you wouldn't put it over top of that, but, you know, if you get to a reconstruction, we'd probably rebuild some of the sewer, and, and we'd consider that being out under at least maybe a northbound lane. And you wouldn't have to, you know, we wouldn't have to buy it all at one time. If the regional detention was done, and we just did the pipe on Independence, that's a good start in the problem. You know, it's gonna help the intersection. Some of the stuff closer uptown, you're not gonna relieve right away, but...
Could you put a, you, you put an intake there at the intersection, put the, if you could put the detention pond in?
Sure.
That would just catch the pond there, that, that pool at the intersection?
Yeah, yeah, you know, yeah, if you put four intakes on that intersection, and a sixty inch pipe, and all those, probably relieve a lot of it.
Yeah.
But, you know, and maybe the place to start on this one is, uh, soil borings. Figure out what pond size we think we should build, you know, I think being K's like that over the years, Kirk and Michael's like that over the years. You know, see how big it is, and then go take staffs and folks of holes, see what's down there, see what we hit. You know, if it can go straight to the... You know, it might be able to go straight to the landfill, that's the cheapest, if it's worse, more expensive, they'd like to bring on, could do worse stuff, but, or if somebody's got a ditch south of town, it goes in a ditch, and somebody else run into a hundred years now.
Thanks Danny. Alrighty, Mr. Mayor, the last point that we have is, we had two projects listed up there, and I believe the total's somewhere, could be anywhere from six and a half to about seven and a half billion dollars of public funding for these, just these two projects. Now, what numerous cities across the state of Iowa have done to assist with the funding of these types of infrastructure improvements related to stormwater, they've created stormwater utilities, I would like to mention, it was in the memo, but for the stormwater utility, that would not take a vote in the citizens of Pella, rather, that could be approved by the Pella City Council via ordinance on establishing the utility, so that's an important point to keep in mind. But when you look at it, the reasons why you wanna consider, as you're talking about potential improvements to the city stormwater system, why you would wanna consider the financing of it as well, so the first item is significant costs are often associated with large scale projects involving or updating city infrastructure or stormwater infrastructure in this example. Now, absent any other funding source that we would have on it, and most likely, if you're talking about issuing, funding these types of projects, you'd be issuing in some sort of debt issue, that debt issue would likely be a general obligation debt. Is important to keep in mind, when we talk about general obligation debt, oftentimes, general obligation debt is paid through property taxes, at least the city would have the ability to levy a debt service levy to fund the debt, or a general obligation debt. Now, one of the reasons why cities have chosen to fund, uh, or establish stormwater utilities is important to keep in mind, that not all entities that contribute to stormwater issues within your community pay property taxes on this as well. We just listed up some of the items, but typically, schools, hospitals, and nonprofit entities typically, I wouldn't say typically, but they could contribute to stormwater issues in the community, but typically, these entities don't pay property taxes on it as well. So with, by establishing the stormwater utility, generally, all entities would pay the stormwater utility fee on it as well, so that's an important point to keep in mind. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Okay. It's also important to keep in mind, if we do tackle or choose to initiate about reducing infiltration and inflow, typically, those require additional operational resources. Now, when we talk about stormwater, both from an operational standpoint, as well as capital improvements, typically, the two sources that we have in Danny's budget is within the streets department, the streets department is typically funded through road use taxes, as well as the wastewater utility, and that's funded through wastewater fees. Now, when we looked at these, um, two sources, and you're talking about potential projects in the range of six to seven million dollars, currently, these two funding sources do not have the capacity to fund large scale stormwater initiatives or improvements. As we stated earlier, all council, not all, I mean, there'd be a lot of deliberations of getting to this point, but to form a stormwater utility would just be a simple adoption, not as simple, council would need to adopt an ordinance that would establish the stormwater utility. Now, for other cities, what they typically done for the, uh, for the stormwater fees, is typically, they're based on the amount of impervious area and individual properties contained as well. So before we turn it over to questions and follow up from council on this, if we were to choose to recommend or proceed with the stormwater utility to help fund some of these improvements that would be needed on the stormwater system, staff would recommend to council, before we establish the utility, that we identify and develop stormwater objectives, as well as establish a capital improvement program, as well, if it'd be a stormwater utility, we think that would be wise, and particularly, anytime we start talking and charging additional fees to fund infrastructure improvements, we'd wanna make sure that we establish the nexus between the new utility and one of the projects we intended to address within the foreseeable future. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation, be happy to answer any questions council may have, but ultimately, we're looking for direction on this item.
So Danny, uh, we showed two areas, how many more are there?
There's a, you know, street flooding were not too bad, really set very good, as you know, the founding fathers, they built us on a ridge between two rivers, pretty much from the square goes in Duane, and it was, from the north it goes to the scum, you know, so we're fortunate that way, we're not like a lot of communities that have a lot of flooding in comparison. Now, certain houses in certain neighborhoods, they darted, I mean, they'll, that's not true, you know, I'll let you know. On the sewer backup issue, there's a lot of other areas, but they're smaller, more isolated. I showed you the big one where Pella has a lack of storm sewer, you know, cause in other places, if we have ditches, or creeks, or ponds, and a lot of other different things have been done over the years to, to help reduce IONI, or get them out of their basement anyway. So a lot of the others, areas are a lot smaller, you know, and we have files and files of stuff, complaints over the years, and, you know, when those complaints go away, we know that they did something right, or made some improvements. You know, another thing, uh, kinda promoting utility too, there are some funds out there now, because nutrient reduction is huge in the EPA's eyes, and that, what I was on down to DNR, there are some grants out there, um, available, I think they prefer to have the, have the utility in place first, you know, and then still to have the need, but they're all for slowing down clearwater, so it doesn't carry the nutrients with it on down to the river, cause, you know, they pick on us as communities at the treatment plant, but what, and, you know, we're an egg state, I get that, you know, what, what goes through our treatment is a penis compared to two or three farms added together, anywhere around town. But they're, they're on to too, we do so much fertilization of yards in town, the, you know, the nitrogen and phosphorus is a huge concern in town too. So that's why they have, there are some funds available, but, but it's done on a formula, and they'd like to see you have something already in place going, making an effort. Then it's all about slowing it down, it's, you're not, you don't have in somebody's basement trying to get it out of there. You know, another thing that's new, back to the flooded basement issue, is where they got us on West Third, when we had to do that, of course, we had a ten inch pipe, we put in a fifteen, and same thing on East Third, both of those were bottlenecks, no doubt, and we found some other issues. But they, uh, they actually started at that time when they mandated that one, declare basement backups as a bypass. So when Dave Anderson's world, superintendent of wastewater, him and I, under his watch, he's obligated, called DNR, when we know about a basement backup, cause they consider that a bypass. And we argued with, till it blew in the face, and we're just one of a million arguing with them, that it didn't bypass, it didn't run anywhere. It's waited, the water went down, and then it went back down in the sewer, and we still treated it, you know, so there's any bypass that happened at the plant, not in somebody's basement, but they're now, we're holding that a bypass, a reportable bypass. And so it's like, I'm just, I don't wanna know about it, cause as soon as Dave and I know about it, we gotta write ourselves out at DNR. And they're usually friendly about it, it's not a fine or anything, it's just, but it's a violation, and it goes unrecked. So it's, crazy world that way, so they're on it, they, but of course, there's not enough money to go around and fix all the problems.
Do either of the projects, residential and commercial, that presented help with these citizens that are having sewer backup, that's still an individual and a lot based issue, correct?
It is, and, and I've got a couple other staff members that agree to have it. We'd love to go out and see what's going on, and see if we can help. And by help, just advise, you know, and, and see if there isn't something simple, they're just doing it home. You know, and some houses, believe it or not, homeownership, I, I think we all know, we'll make sure, dirt in your flower bed slopes away from the house, but we go out to a lot of these, and it's tip back, or the sidewalks tip back all along the front of the house, and, and the, and the roof drains are coming down, hitting sidewalk, and voila, it's blue, it's in the basement. So we try to help when we can, we answer a lot of the more serious problems all the time. Sometimes we help, sometimes we can't.
So if we as, if we, as a city, would do the project of University Street, uh, the highway, or Washington?
Yep.
Or I mean, Oskaloosa. But people that live in that area didn't rehook there, would help, wouldn't help them?
We just wasted our money and time.
Okay.
You know, and that's where, uh, DNR on the sanitary sewer side, for years, in fact, that's what that seventies study led up to, all the improvements that were done in eighty, eighty-one, certainly in Pella, there was sixteen, seventeen million dollars, that's when all our trunk sewers, the three pump station, the holding pond, it was sixteen, seventeen million dollars, D and K was our engineer at the time. That's what kicked that off, cause Pella had such this huge IONI problem, so they did their best to eliminate here in town, but then at that time, the mentality or philosophy was, just build bigger pipe and a bigger plant. So we did that too. Now it's kinda reversed, we don't want you to build bigger pipes and a bigger plant, you know, we, we'd rather you take care of IONI, which is cheaper for everybody, but it's, the neighborhood like we just looked at with no storm sewer. You know, if that had even concrete pipe up half of those streets, and we could just do eight inch up the rest, and then go and do a service to each lot, and we'd be talking about three, four hundred thousand dollar project, or less. And everybody could hook up, but nothing there. And just going to university isn't enough, that's probably...
Was, what kind of direction we, uh, want?
I would like to see us keep exploring, setting something up.
A utility?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be real honest, the, the council has danced around this issue for years. It's been there, we know it's there, we know it's expensive.
Yeah, some of these issues, it seems, are just continually passed, leadership just moving the problems, putting on train in a ditch.
It's not gonna get better.
So I think, I think it is time to do something, uh, with this infrastructure.
And the DNR is just gonna keep tightening the screws?
Yep.
And it seems like a wastewater utility, or stormwater utility, would be the way to go.
Do, do, like, do you know offhand, like our neighbors Knoxville, Oskaloosa, Grinnell, Albia, any stormwater utilities?
I don't think so. I'm not aware of any, but then we have...
I think Oskaloosa did. I think Oskaloosa did. I think I can remember it popping up on the utility bill.
And maybe they did build a couple of big proj, huge projects. That might be. You know, we check, it's something we just haven't followed.
Okay.
But I do it most times, and I'd be labor, the bad news tonight, that of course we're dealing with the lead water service that we've had. We're starting to investigate this summer. You know, that's mandated and that's, that can kick back too to major costs on the private side. And it's, it's the right thing to do. Let people know, we think they got, but. A lot of that's going to take hydro excavation out in the front yard. At least let's get a pot hole decent enough where we can get comfortable with seeing.
So the, the fees are based on impervious area. That's the square footage of the house, driveways, and the sidewalk part of it.
I think that's all to be determined how you do.
Yeah, that's, that'll be spelled out in ordinance. What we've seen is generally of the law, how much of it is covered with impervious surface.
Yeah. So big park lots, big driveways, big square footages. Are going to be higher cost anyways.
The ones I've seen as far as the fees associated with it, but those are all items that the council is going to have to address.
You know, one heads up to you, you'll run into, and somebody here will go, well, a lot of communities have went to allowing impervious surface as the answer. So you can buy these blocks and bricks that come in different shapes and sizes and water can run through them. And then you do this fancy design underneath. You start going down to the clay, you put filler fabric, you put a large. Clean stone, then a smaller clean stone, more filler fabric, and then this impervious block. Problem is, in Iowa, we all use sand. We have silt and erosion everywhere just about. And you almost got to take it out every five to ten years, set it aside, clean your rock, you might say, and put it all back. Because they don't work after just a few years. We had heavy pressure when I started here fifteen years ago, and a whole bunch of people central wanted to do a bunch of it, and it's like, it's not equivalent to detention. It is, it's just not. And I've seen some tests, case dry, and it just, they fill with sand or salt because it's. Where did all this come from? But they do, they just plug up. It runs off just like concrete.
Well, we've got millions and millions of dollars of property in this community that is not on the tax rolls. Does not pay for fire service or. Street cleaning or any of that kind of stuff. We could at least catch them.
They have a lot of water running off.
I saw Mike on your second bullet point, you said wastewater fees. Does that also, does that spill over, can be used for stormwater?
That's where, if you were to look at, well, you're indirectly paying for the stormwater utility, a portion of it, if you're looking to see what we do now. Both from an operational standpoint as well as a capital improvement project, that's where it shows up at Danny's budget.
Okay.
And, and the public works department is in the wastewater division as well as the, in, in the streets division.
And when we tell them to reconstruct a street, we deck the street up and everything underneath done, redone. New sanitary, new storm. Once in a while, we can save and stretch a storm, you know, in bigger pipe, and usually it's. It's kind of broken bells that it's all redone. And this day and age, services will switch to plastic to cheapen the price. Unfortunately, plastics. Kept right up with it, just a little bit cheaper, and plastic pipe is not forgiving. All your, your fiber company just poke holes through it, day in and day out. That's why we still like the RCP Pella. I've gotten a lot of pressure to go to plastic intake structures too, same problem. They're brittle over the years, they'll break. And directional pour machines love that aim for them. It's just, it's like a magnet. We'll allow them privately, but not public street rideways, just. Between gas, electric, underground, all the fibers. Somebody pouring every day on some street, it's ain't nothing anymore.
Okay, we'll explore that, I think.
Thank you.
All right, we, uh, need to go into an exempt session, so. Which I don't think to make any decisions coming out of that, so. We'll stay here to do that, so everyone will have to have a relief. There are no motions coming out of our exempt session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, report.
I am Mr. Hopkins. All in favor, say yes. Code, drill, man.
Danstra?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Carl Stone?